So we will have Mr. Lusher say the prayer and then we're going to follow that up by the pledges of the flag. If you could stand, please.
Almighty God, you created us in your image, all equal in your sight. We give you thanks for the work of elections officials here in Talbot County and across America and ask your blessing on them that they may continue to ensure free and fair elections for your people here, protecting their rights from those who would curtail them. Help us to see the humanity in one another. Bless our work tonight as a council that we may govern with wisdom and justice. We pray in your most holy name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which we stand, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so thank you, Mr. Lusher, for the great prayer. Appreciate that. Welcome everybody tonight. So let's get started on the agenda. The agenda of December 21st is before us. Is there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda?
I'll move that we remove item six, the presentation request by Talbot County Board of Elections.
Okay.
I'll second.
We've got a motion in the second to eliminate number six. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Ms. Price? Yep.
Mr. Pat?
Aye.
Okay.
And we should say that that was at their request.
Yes, that's at their request. Thank you, Mr. DeVio. She wasn't able to make it tonight. Okay, and by the way, before we get started, Mrs. Price is on the phone here, so she's with us here tonight, too. Okay, the next thing on the agenda is the minutes. On the minutes of the November 23rd, are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, the chair moves that the minutes be accepted by unanimous consent. Okay, the next thing on the agenda is dispersments of December 21st. Councils had a chance to review them. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to dispersments, council? Hearing none, the chair moves that the dispersments be accepted by unanimous consent. Okay, so the next thing on the agenda is introduction of Mrs. Church. We're happy to have her. So if you don't mind, come on up. And Joe, you want to come on up?
I just wanted to know, Stan Church, our new election director, she's served six years as a deputy director in Waukesha County, so she's got a lot of experience.
That's great.
Now we're oriented to Talbot County.
Okay, that's good.
It's a pleasure.
It's a pleasure. Really appreciate you doing the job and stepping up and just want to let you know that the council, you're always welcome to come here. I'm sure you'll be in front of us a little bit through the years here coming, and you're always welcome to reach out to if you need us. We're there to help you.
Well, thank you. I'm looking forward to working with you.
Yeah, yeah, council.
Well, you're coming in at a busy time. It's an election year. I expect that some of us will become familiar faces over time.
We will.
Look forward to working with you.
Looking forward to it.
Yeah, welcome, Ms. Church. Likewise, this is a very busy time of the year. You're going into a presidential election and gubernatorial election, well gubernatorial election, I should say, not presidential. So you're going to have really a busy time here in the next couple of months, if not already. So welcome aboard.
Thank you.
I like the pink and white there, too. It's AKA, huh?
Yes, yes, thank you. All right, it's a pleasure.
Thank you, Ms. Church. I appreciate it.
Uh-huh.
Okay, okay, that was great. So we're all set for the elections. Okay, next on the agenda, the electoral vote. We got resolution 310 electoral vote. Madam Secretary, could you go ahead and read the title, please?
Resolution number 310, a resolution authorizing the transfer of any interest Talbot County, Maryland holds at Flood Avenue to the town of Easton and the execution of a quick claim deed to effectuate the sale.
Okay, thank you, Madam Secretary. So, Mr. Stam, do you want to just make sure that we're all clear here?
Yes, yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Counsel, President, members of the council. After last week's meeting, our county engineer met with the town engineer and our road superintendent, and they took a look at the situation, and they have affirmed that we are good to go.
That sounds great.
We can look forward to this. It would be the recommendation.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Stam. So, any questions for council? Everybody good with that information? Okay, do I have a motion?
I think there's a little vote tonight.
Okay, so is it, I don't need a motion to move forward, just need a vote? Is that all we need? Okay?
Right, a second time. That's all you need.
Okay. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pat?
Aye.
Okay, all right, pretty good. Next thing on the agenda here, if Joy could come on up, that would be great. It's going to do a discussion, and this is very important for the citizens to, we're going to try to do our best we can to help you understand the penalties and the interest and stuff like that with the sewer in the last couple of years that's gone, you know, gone on, and we've deferred that and tried to help everybody out in the county here. So I'm going to leave it up to Joy to help us get through this and see what we can do here.
Okay, we're going to try very hard.
Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I really do appreciate having the opportunity to speak with you this evening.
Could you put that mic up a little?
I will put it. Is that good? Okay. I also want to take this opportunity to introduce you to Tracy Smith. I'm not sure if you had an opportunity to meet him or not. He works with me in the finance department as a tax, he is, he's our accountant. He handles property taxes and knows most things tax-related. He's very well-versed in the sanitary districts billing, so I wanted him to have a chance to come out and speak as well and answer any questions that you might have.
That sounds great.
We are about to prepare the sewer bills for the quarter, and so we do have a decision to make. Because of the economic hardships faced by our community during the pandemic, it was recommended by the finance department and approved by council that we waive interest and penalties on delinquent sewer bills. And we had asked for permission from council beginning April 2020. We asked for permission three times, April 2020 to December 2020. It was reaffirmed January 2021 through June 2021, and then again July 2021. The deferment is set to expire on December 31st. So now, we all, we, we all know that the pandemic is ongoing and hardships likely continue for many community members. A question is, the question is, should we continue to waive the interest and penalties on delinquent accounts? What I want to do is give you enough information, I hope, to inform the decision, and have you, you have the opportunity to ask us any questions that you might have. So currently, there are 143 delinquent accounts, and we define those delinquent accounts as anybody owing more than a quarter's worth, a quarter's bill. So that's approximately 5% of our about 2,800 sewer accounts. The balance owed is, for these delinquent accounts is about $111,000. And on an individual account basis, that's, you know, individually between $400 to $1,000 is how much is owed. Before the pandemic, and we measured that as of December 2019, there were approximately 200 delinquent accounts. So we're in a better position today. And that was out of 2,800 total accounts, and the balance at that point was $97,000. So the balance, the total balance has grown, but the number of counts is down. So, yeah, of course, we could continue to waive the interest and penalties, but I don't think that gets to the root of the problem. Interest and penalties, we project on average is only about 9% of the outstanding balance of an individual's account, so it likely does not affect the customer's ability to pay. And because of this, I don't, you know, I really don't recommend that we extend the deferral of interest and penalties. A separate question, you know, the need for some assistance to pay outstanding bills is a separate and important question. There could also be a need for support with other utilities for the broader community. You know, I believe that we need to assess the need for assistance, you know, with a broader review of community needs. And just as, you know, you know, the process, just a little bit about the process. If the accounts, the customer's account is delinquent at the end of February, after we prepare the bills, if we don't waive the interest and they're considered delinquent, they will be notified at that point that they will enter the tax sale process. And they will receive a flyer from us that gives them some information about agencies they could reach out to for support, just as we do with folks that get behind on their property taxes. Yeah. And they still have the ability to get current at that point. The file that we make for folks that would enter the tax sale process doesn't happen until April of 2022, and we're predicting that the next tax sale will happen in May of 2022.
So he's all for quiet.
Well, he's waiting for questions.
He does some great work, and I heard you do very great work, and we really appreciate everything that you do.
Yes.
Tracy, that's for sure. So, so out of 143 people that are behind a little bit, we're helping. Do, or I think you said, we have alerted them that this date of December 31st is sort of the end of it? Do they know that at this point, or are we deciding that now?
Um, so.
At this point, we decide now?
We're deciding it now, and so when the bills get prepared at the beginning of the year, at that point, yeah.
Right, I think, I think council, we probably need to discuss is the 31st of December. She's kind of recommending that, you know, they're hearing this for the first time, so I'm not sure.
Well, not the first time. Remember, this is our third extension of penalties and so forth. You know, the council has done a great job with our CARES funding to help citizens out who had a hardship, and we, through Cassandra's office and through the county manager's office, you know, we were able to help a number of citizens who fell upon hard times. You know, we worked very closely with our utility companies, both here in the town and outside the town, to help citizens out who were having some difficulty. We couldn't use CARES funding, I believe, for sewer, but we could use it for some utility bills. So there was some assistance over and above the waiver of the penalties and fees. You have the assistance you could have gotten for utility and taken up money and swung it over and paid the sewer bill if you were so inclined. And it seemed that some citizens did that because you were at 200 delinquent accounts at the onset, and now you're down to 143. So there were, there were some who did what they should have done and paid their bills. You know, the chicken will come home to roost at some point, and I think that you, you can do as much as you can to help citizens out through some difficult times. But, you know, I think it comes to a point where you have to say, this is, this is the end date. Let's, you know, pick back up and pay your bills, so.
It seems to me that the certain, it seems to me that the circumstances that motivated this, the pandemic shutdown, the fact that some people were out of work, this was, this was done back in the days when we were wondering, you know, how are we going to replace this income, the paycheck protection program and other, those programs worked. We, people are back to work, many of them now remotely. The recovery is pretty remarkable, which is not to say that everybody's out of trouble. But we're back to economic circumstances that are more typical of pre-pandemic times and that, and where the social safety net that existed prior is still in place, the services such as the Neighborhood Service Center that can help people with these utilities bills. Those programs remain in place, and I think I can, we had, you know, this shouldn't come as a surprise to anybody. We had said this was going through the end of this year. It would be news if we were to choose to extend this for any period of time. What I'm hearing, what I'm hearing here is that there's, there's not substantial justification for continuing to do so.
Okay, Mr. DeVio?
So, I'm looking at $110,000 that's owed to the county from 143 people, which is about $700 on average.
Right.
What's an, what is an average water?
Somewhere between 100 and 200.
The average sewer bill, depending on where you live, I think in Tillman District, it's about $130. If you live in Mardiham, I think it's $182.50. Ria Vista, I think, is $177.50, which I think is the same as St. Michael's. Royal Oak and Bellevue, I believe, is $175. It might be $177.50.
That's fine. Okay, so that's.
So it's somewhere in that general.
So the amount outstanding to these individuals is much more than they're accustomed to coming up with on a quarterly basis. It's accrued over a lot of, a lot of time. I don't want to see 143 houses go to a tax sale, nor do I want 143 people running into the Neighborhood Service Center and asking for $1,000 and completely depleting that account as well. But it's clear that if we continue it, it's just going to continue to grow exponentially, and it's, the amount of people coming off of it, it's not, it's not correlating to the amount that we owe back. So, yeah, I don't, I don't see how, if someone were to come in and make payment arrangements to this, would that extend or prevent them from going to the tax sale?
Generally.
If there's money owed, they owe.
Many of the customers, there's already in place that they can pay whatever they can pay on the bill. They don't have to pay the whole bill in full if they can't. Since it's a quarterly bill, you could, in theory, pay so much for each of the three months and make up most of it, maybe without the interest. But we're talking 1% of the interest, so.
But I think if they have to get their bill down to $50, is that correct?
Yes, it, well, for sewer, if we cut off on December 31st, they'll get a bill in January. That won't go against them for tax sale, and they'll get another one in April, and that won't go against them for tax sale. But whatever's outstanding at December 31st, they would have to pay down to less than $50 to be taken out, if the sewer bills are the only charges they have that are outstanding. If they have taxes outstanding, they would be in the sale anyway.
Okay.
But by December 31st?
Well, whatever the balance is at December 31st. If they pay, say, in mid-February, and they get down below that, then they'll come out of the sale process. Even if they pay in March or in April before it goes to the newspaper, they'll come out then, too, so.
And $110,000 is out of the $450,000 quarterly revenue. That's a big chunk of money, and that, that, I don't want to just ignore that, even though I'm sure Ray could spend that in one pump sometimes, it seems like. But it, it seems like people would have six months to get to, get it collected, paid up, and as well as, well, or I guess, no, because you're going to only have December through April. Yes, I'm fine with ending it, and as long as we're putting out options and letting people know what ability, where they can go for assistance, I think, I think it's the thing that we have to do, unfortunately.
Okay, all right, so I guess we'll put this to a vote?
Or is this simply a no action needed?
All right, we just take the recommendations of Joy? Is that what we're, or do we need to take action on this?
If this ends, it just ends. You don't have to take any, like, it just ends on 31st.
I think for Ms. Nagel's benefit, it would, it would be nice for the council to take ownership of this, that we are bringing this to an end. And it was great that, I appreciate you bringing this to us, to our attention, trying to look for some kind of guidance. You're obviously, you're not the one making this decision. You're going to get the brunt of it, but that, that's not fair. It is, these individuals who haven't gone out and looked for help yet, there is help out there, and we will help them. And put it back on me if you need to. But I appreciate the difficult position that you're going to be in. But thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, council. All right, so Joy, you got your sort of marching orders, and, you know, you and Tracy. So Tracy, I really appreciate everything you can do to try to help these individuals. So if there's.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
If there's something that needs to be come to our attention of some sort that the council can help, you know, we've helped for two years, so, you know, added 143, if there's a few of them there that, for some reason, you know, something's not right, please come to the council so we can help these people. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I was just going to say, I don't know whether, if Mr. DeVio was alluding to a motion to take the matter off of Ms. English's shoulders and put it on council's shoulders, I would entertain a motion. That's what he was leaning towards, although one is not necessary. If he wanted it for the record, I would certainly second any motion to do so. So just putting it out there.
I sort of think it would probably, you know, help, help put it on our shoulders, you know? I mean.
So I can do that. So I'll make a motion that we bring it into the deferment on the sewer bills and start billing regularly again.
I'll second that.
Okay, we've got a motion in the second to end a deferment of December 31st. Madam Secretary, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pat?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Let me say, let me say to Tracy, I think you've outdone me with your tie, so I'm.
I love it.
Tracy, thank you, Tracy, for all your help.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ready. County manager report. You want to go with the county manager report?
I sure do. Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Well, so, under county manager report this evening, first of all, before I go into that, I just want to recognize the good work that Joy and, and the team, Tracy and Ken back here do. It's, you know, been some challenging times running special programs, and of course, I'll give a quick briefing on the fire that we had in the North Wing on Sunday, and they're, they're just doing what it takes to get the job done. So just want to recognize them for that. Under county manager report, Mr. Counsel, President, members of the council, we have one request this evening for the appointment of Mr. Michael Weaver to the Weed Control Board.
So move.
Second.
Motion in the second. Madam Secretary, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pat?
Aye.
And before moving on, I just want to share that there are a number of board and committee opportunities available for the public to serve, and they can view those by going to our website at talbotcountymd.gov under county council. And I know, council, you have encouraged me to share that with the public, and we do seek volunteers to help with those, those important jobs. The next item I have is a request from the Department of Public Works. Ray, could you come forward, please? Thank you. So the Department of Public Works is requesting to submit a grant loan application to Maryland Water Control Financing Administration Water Control Infrastructure Finance Program. As you read your packet, they are requesting council approval to apply for a water quality infrastructure finance program for seven environmental projects. Applications are due January 31st of 2022, and they're, rather than me go through all seven of those, Ray is here. He's going to go through the seven with you to make sure you're okay and to gain your permission to submit that.
Okay. Counsel, just so you're aware, each year, we're actually, the county has provided the opportunity to apply to MDE through the Maryland Water Quality Infrastructure Program for funding, basically through what they call the State Revolving Fund for Loans, where you can actually get loan forgiveness as well as a low-interest loan. And also for those wastewater projects, those can also receive bay restoration funding, both, basically in grants. What we've been looking at is basically, one, the first project would be the replacement of the Preserve Wide Mills Wastewater Treatment Plant, submitting that as a project. The next one would be basically an emergency generator for the Mardiham Water and Wastewater System. This third project would actually be for the Unionville-Tunesville-Cockerville system. This would actually be a sensor that we, pressure sensors, we put on the force main that would help us monitor the force main, so it would reduce, let's say, sanitary sewer overflows that would be associated with breaks that might happen in that force main. At the same time, we'd also be adding vacuum collection sensors. They're pretty much the same sensor, but then these would be added to the Mardiham, which would then help us with saving overtime pay when that system goes down.
Ray, the sensors, I'm sorry, do they go to a phone? Are they, are you going to get?
They're actually cellular. So they, there's a cellular system. They go right into a central component that's put at the wastewater treatment plant. They then call in, and then they will be interactive with our smart site plan map. So they'll then pop up as where they're located. Is, you know, so if, let's say we have a manhole or a curve valve, or not a curve valve, I'm sorry about it, but a valve, you know, a valve assembly that broke, let's say along Maryland Route 33, we would then get a low-pressure sense, low pressure in that force main. Once we have that low pressure, that would then trigger probably two points of where that break is located. We'd have a, you know, just beyond where the break, beyond that one valve, and then the valve that's downstream from that would also be showing a low pressure. So that would then give our guys the ability to come out. In addition, these sensors also have float switches that we can actually put right into the, into the valve box. So if there's water building up, or there's flow building up, and usually that's what's happened in the past, we'll see the level of water build up. Now, some of that can be rainwater, but it also can be an early warning system for us if there's a break at that, in that valve, in that tee, in that, that we have in those valve boxes. And so that's usually where we tend to see the problems is in those valve boxes. So it would be really an early warning system as well for us to react immediately to get out there.
Amber, will you then get that on your cell phone, that alarm's going?
That will actually, it'll trigger, and it'll actually, we have, when it calls into our system, it'll call out the operator. So it's going to call the first operator on call, the second operator on call, and then the third operator on call.
Okay, great.
The other item is basically the Barneck Fairbank. We're looking at trying to get funding to extend sewer out from the Tillman Island Wastewater Treatment Plant, the properties out on Barneck and Fairbank. In addition to that, we have, I guess, the Tillman Island Sewer Collection System. This would be kind of a, what we call, I guess, a sanitary sewer evaluation. So this would more or less do what we're doing in St. Michael's. We'd do smoke testing and a preliminary engineering report, and then start the process of working to correct I and I problems. We know that we do have them, looking at the monitoring reports. So this would be basically the first phase of what we were doing in St. Michael's. So, yeah, in addition to that project, we'd also be looking at Unionville-Tunesville-Cockville. We currently have E1 pumps. We have a lot of 200 series pumps. Right now, E1 does not support the 200 series, so we're looking at basically replacing those with the, with the extreme pumps. And so this would basically be funding to go ahead and replace all of our 200, as well as 1,000 and 2,000 series E1 pumps with all, yeah, extreme grinder pumps. And then the last project we would have is actually doing the preliminary, as well as design, for the Tillman Island Wastewater Treatment Plant. We did have RK&amp;K complete the preliminary engineering report, which actually found the feasibility to, more or less, instead of upgrading the Tillman Island plant, we would actually pump all that wastewater flow to St. Michael's. So this would be basically moving this project into design, well, actually, planning, looking. well, actually, planning, looking at all the properties that we look at, trying to surveying with sewer between St. Michael's and Tillman Island, and then ultimately begin the process with design.
So at this point, we're, that is the decision, that is the engineering study justifies the connection rather than rebuilding the Tillman Island?
Yes, sir. And that's partly due to the fact, when we looked at, when we started looking at sea level rise, that had a major impact on us, is that, basically, the elevations of a lot of the roads and manholes on Tillman Island would actually become submerged, probably within the next so many years, you know, that they were predicting. So looking at it on a 50-year basis, it would be best to put, you know, pump that flow to St. Michael's rather than have it impact the wastewater treatment plant.
Okay, council.
Mr. Callahan, I'll make a motion that we accept the grant loan package for water quality infrastructure program.
I'll second.
All right, Mr. Pack. Okay, Mr. Davilio. Motion in the second. So, Madam Secretary, could you call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Davilio?
Aye.
Mr. Leisher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Penn?
All right.
Thank you.
And as Ray steps away, just want to give him a lot of credit. He's working really diligently with MDE to address hooking more systems on, more septic systems onto our sewer system. Clearly, it's an environmental mitigation effort, and the more we can get on, the better. So Ray, keep up the good work.
Now, Ray, before you go, not tonight, but after the New Year, could you come back and give us an update on furry point? I understand there may have been a change there that I think council needs to be aware, made aware of.
That'd be fine. I'll go ahead and take care of that.
Thank you.
And, counsel, I want to give you a brief update. As you all know, this past Sunday, about 11:45 in the morning, the 911 Center received an alarm for a fire in the courthouse. Easton Volunteer Fire Company responded. Other companies responded to the system. There was a fire on the first floor of the North Wing. The fire was isolated to the clerk's office. A piece of equipment caused the fire. It did burn up a countertop and extended toward the ceiling. Three sprinkler heads activated, put the fire out. There is fire damage in that area of the clerk's office. However, about 10,000 gallons of water were released. So the first floor of the basement area, we had pretty extensive water damage, as well as smoke damage. We very, very quickly reached out to Royal Plus Disaster Cleanup. They responded within two hours, 15 vehicles, a tractor, trailer, and 40 people. Within four hours, using these special pieces of equipment to evacuate the water out of the building, they got about 10,000 gallons out of this building. It was pretty impressive to see. They put machines in to begin scrubbing the air and addressing moisture issues, humidity. They are working together with the county, our insured, the state, which the clerk's office and the Register of Wills are state organizations. They are working collectively with all three entities and moving very swiftly to try to get that wing back open. And what I would encourage people to do to have business with the clerk of court or the Register of Wills, is to go to their websites, and they're being updated daily as we move through this. Again, we're moving quickly to try to get all services up and running as quickly as possible. I do want to just highlight the excellent cooperation with Patty Camp and our Register of Wills, Kathy DeVal, our clerk of court, Judge Kehoe, Brian Moore, who is our facilities manager, Joy Nagel, and then, again, Royal Plus Disaster Cleanup, who's done an absolute amazing job with a very difficult situation. So I'll continue to keep council aware of what's going on, and our team will continue to work to get services back up. With that being said, I want to announce that county offices will be closed on Thursday, December 23rd, and Friday, December 24th, and Friday, December 31st. And the only last thing I would say is I would like to wish everybody happy holidays, happy and safe holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you there, Mr. Stan. Appreciate it. Appreciate your report. Appreciate all the good work your own team has done involving in that fire. That could have been a lot worse, that's for sure. So, okay, so let's move on to public comment. Is there a sheet out there, or?
There's nobody here this evening, Mr. Callahan. Nobody's signed up.
Okay.
We're not loved anymore, huh?
Clark, you got anything?
Mr. Clark?
I'm good. I got you. So, okay, so let's move on to council comments. Mr. Pack.
Okay. Well, thank you. I just want to tell those listening at home, don't adjust your volume. That gristling sound you hear in Mr. Stan's voice is not in your audio. It's... So, yeah, I want to also echo the wishing everyone a very joyous and merry and safe Christmas and New Year, as we will not be back together until after the New Year. So be safe in your travels and in your contact with friends and family, and enjoy yourself as best we possibly can. I had an opportunity over the weekend to attend a funeral of Mr. Francis Wilson. Mr. Wilson is, was, a barber here in town. He was also the uncle of Karen Roberts, who is, as you know, on staff here, and Eddie Roberts, who is one of our EMTs. And the reason why I mention this is that, in listening to the service and listening to all that Mr. Wilson gave to this community, it would just hit me in a certain way. He was class of Mauden, 1957. At the age of 25 in 1963, he opened up his own barber shop here on West Street. In 1977, at the age of 39, he purchased his own building right here, right next door on Glenwood Avenue, 18 Glenwood Avenue, where he operated there for 55 years as a barber. And he trained a number of young men in that trade, including his nephew, Eddie Roberts, who cut hair there for a number of years. He also drove school buses, 25 years here in the county. And, you know, the one thing that we all know about a haircut is that it can just do so much for your confidence. It gives you that confidence, if you're a young man going off to college and you're getting that haircut, or you're about to go down the aisle to, say, your nuptials, that haircut is just not a haircut. It means so much more. And that hometown barber, I mean, he's your counselor, he's your tax advisor, he knows where you can get the best roast beef sandwich in town. I mean, that local barber just, it's more than just a haircut, you know? And I always say that the local barber shop is like the working man's country club. You're seeing, you're going to see just about every walk of life through there, from postal carriers to truck drivers to utility workers, politicians and the like. So we had this service this past Friday down at Scott's in Trapp to say goodbye to him, farewell to him, Francis Wilson, Wilson Barber Shop, 55 years here in Easton. Again, just want to just give a highlight to this remarkable career that he had here, and the many lives that he touched along the way, including my own. So just wanted to give a shout out to him and his family, and a special condolences to them as well. With that, I'll pass it back over.
Thank you, Mr. Pack. You had some kind words, and let's give regards to your family. Mr. Davilio?
So, as we head into Christmas this weekend, to me, it means generosity in that regard. We're heading into a time that is always emotionally difficult for individuals. Mental health has been a big concern of everyone's over the last couple of years. And this is going to be a time when individuals who are normally going out, grandparents who are going out seeing grandkids, parents who are traveling to see their children and grandchildren, aren't going to be able to. They won't feel comfortable to do it. So I ask everybody to just take a little step back and think about how the holiday season can be different and still be pleasurable for all those involved. No pressure to anybody who's not feeling safe or comfortable doing something, but just keep an eye out, an ear out, and if you have that neighbor that you don't often see, or doesn't get out much, a phone call can mean a lot, a card can mean a lot. Just, please, just try to be generous and think of others during this time, and not just what, how you see the holiday. Times are different, and we need to adjust to that. And for seniors, not being able to use technology is a big challenge. A lot of us think, oh, we'll just throw Grandma on FaceTime and let her see the kids over the presents, and that doesn't happen. So just, you know, maybe dial that corded phone number one extra time this weekend and speak with them. So, thank you, and hope everybody is safe and happy.
Thank you, Mr. Davilio. Ms. Price, can you hear us?
I can hear you. I want to, of course, wish everybody Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, Happy New Year. But also to share that I had the opportunity last week to meet with Governor Hogan, along with the President of Maryland Municipal League, and both organizations were able to present our legislative initiatives from each of our organizations. It was a wonderful meeting we had. He was a great spirit, and he was very, very receptive to hearing what is that we want to put forth. And he has the number one issue for both organizations, this is highway user revenues, which is something that Governor Hogan, even like he was running, you know, seven, eight years ago, was very supportive of. So I expect to be some strong support behind that, behind that initiative from Governor, along with the organization. So it was an honor to be able to just sit and meet with him for an hour, which is my calendar card, because we're in M&L. So it was wonderful. And yes, Happy Holidays to everybody.
Thank you, Ms. Price. Appreciate that. Mr. Vice President?
Thank you. As we, I will wish everybody safe and healthy holidays. As we hear more about the cases of the Omicron variant of COVID-19, there are now some, even some high-profile cases of vaccinated and boosted people with breakout cases. Keep in mind, the vaccines are not intended to prevent transmission of the disease. They are designed to save you from serious illness and death. And they are working well to do exactly that. Vaccines are freely available at the Talbot County Health Department's Center on Marlboro Road. If you are not yet vaccinated, or if you are but not yet boosted and now eligible for that, I encourage you to call for an appointment. This is the time to do that. The life you save may be your own or your mother's.
Okay, it's hard to argue with that one. I want to wish everybody a happy holiday, too. We've all had a tough year here, up here a little bit. And I want to thank, I want to thank the council for the great year we put in. We put in a lot of hard work, and we've made some hard decisions this year. And I want to commend everybody. And on that behalf, I want to make sure that the team that makes us look good, all the employees, and I mean all employees, I think we have 550 employees, and I want to accept my thanks for all they do for the county. I know a lot of them can't be here, but we do appreciate everything they do, part-time and full-time. And, you know, there's situations where you see the true colors about how blessed we are when we have, you know, a fire in this building, and everybody comes together, you know? And there's one goal, to make sure it's safe and we can work in that environment. And that's what we've done in the last few days. So, once again, thank everybody for supporting us and coming to the meetings, the public comments and stuff. We appreciate you being here, and that's what it's here for. So, on that behalf, Mr. Vice President, Mr. Leisher, could you go ahead and close us up?
On Tuesday, January 4th, the County Council will be holding a work session beginning at 3:30 PM to discuss the creation of a police accountability board for Talbot County in accordance with recently enacted state legislation. The work session will be held in the Y Oak Room at the Talbot County Community Center and is open to the public. At 5:30 PM that evening, the council will be holding a joint dinner meeting with the Board of Education. The dinner meeting will be held at the Board Office located at 12 Magnolia Street in Easton. The County Council's next meeting will be held on Tuesday, January 11th, beginning at 6 o'clock PM. The council will be convening an open session at 3:30 PM and immediately adjourning into closed session to discuss real estate, legal, and personnel matters, as listed on the statement for closing that meeting. Therefore, if there's no other business before us, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
I've got one more thing that I have to bring up to Mr. Pack, which is very, very important for him. I hate to do this, but I think I've beaten record, you know? I think I have, you know?
Before he starts the conversation for 20 minutes, I'll make the motion that we adjourn.
I thought he might, because he got wind of what's going to happen. He was getting ready to.
Let me add one more thing to this.
So, Madam Secretary?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Davilio?
Aye.
Mr. Leisher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Penn?
All right.
Good evening. Have great health.